Welcome to the Plimpton School Committee meeting for Tuesday, January 23rd, 2018. Just a brief note that this meeting is being recorded for cablecast and YouTube viewing, and it is not a public record. So with that, I'd just like to acknowledge a couple of visitors that we have here. We have Donna Resmini and Martha McBride are joining us, as well as Garrett Keegan from Green Seal, who is our consultant for the water treatment project. I think what I'd like to do, since Garrett has taken the time out of his day to join us, is that we will actually go a little bit out of order, and we will jump down to water treatment update. Garrett, did you want to give us a bit of an update as to where we're at?
Yes. We had sought to ask the contractor to lower his price by making some modifications or potential modifications to bid. Two things, basically. One is substitution of copper piping for plastic, which when we tried PVC, and the phone inspector in the state home board turned us down on that issue. Subcontract. We might have a problem with that, and we'll check that out. They could approve one specific brand of plastic pipe, polycarbonate heat feed pipe. But when we get back to the contract, he said that because of the relatively small size of the project, the cost of running the project to analyze the part is going to be a wash compared to a facility doing copper pipe. So they were like that. And then the other thing was on the timeframe and town savings and insurance and stuff that were working during the school vacation times. And they didn't turn out that was a big deal. So they basically held the price and said that because prices were actually going up, that they won't hold it until the end of this month.
Right.
So that's what we're looking for.
And I think we'd also, we'd thought of two other items. One was if we had more time, could we get a better price on the equipment? And the factory is flat out, and that's not going to happen.
Yeah, as it turns out, the factory has given us an estimate of like a 30-day turnaround time for some middles, and about three months for actually acquiring equipment. So yeah, pretty busy.
And then the other thing we had that was out there, is one of the things we identified, was not putting in the adjustment for pH. And I think this committee had already decided that that wasn't something that we even wanted to look at. So we're where we were in...
In the debe doo.
In the debe doo. Well, there's that too. So we were all in agreement, I guess. So I guess where that puts us is back where we were in after the bids were opened. We have a bid for 200 and... So that's where we are. And as a result, it would seem, especially since prices were coming up, that it is time for us to move forward on this. One of the things that Garrett did for us is talk to us after an addendum, I think?
Yeah, basically, a change order to change the time of construction. The original contract times were substantial completion of 60 days and ready for final payment of 90 days. Because basically, we're trying to give you the estimation during the school vacation in April, and the amount of time that it's going to take the vendor to provide the equipment, I'd extend that by another 120 days, basically. So the total will be substantial completion of 180 days, which gets us right to basically the end of August and ready for final payment.
Right.
So that's a change order, which I'll sign as recommended, and has to be signed also by the owner, by you, and by the contractor. I changed the language in the actual agreement to coincide with those bids. And those forms will be assigned.
Okay. And who signs for this? Is it the school committee that signs?
School committee.
Okay.
I believe, yes.
Yep, okay. So I guess I would entertain a motion that we accept the bid, and that was Atlas Construction?
That's right.
Accept the bid of Atlas Construction for the numbers stated, and that we move ahead with signing the contract to move this project forward.
I make a motion that we go ahead to sign the contract with Atlas Construction for the water treatment plant for $209,812.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And do you want us to sign that before?
Yeah, actually, if you could sign it now, I can take it and get his signature. Because I can drive right by there if there's someone that's working.
Okay, all right.
I put in a time of starting the contract, basically next Monday. So these dates lie here, those.
Okay.
Could I ask a question, please?
Yes.
Could you scan me a copy of that?
Yes, as soon as I get them all signed.
All right, you'll be waiting for those signatures?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I don't need most of the signatures, since I'm leaving the visual topic. I'm buying a house.
You are.
Kind of close, isn't it? In the agreement, the signature is the last page on each of those. Oh, I just missed something.
Yeah.
Because of the procurement rules in Massachusetts, we also need a signature from a town accountant.
Okay.
Can I leave those with you and with them?
Yeah, we'll have to figure that out.
Yeah.
Okay, so why don't we leave these one at the outset?
Yeah. Either that, or I could take them and have Ted sign first and give them back to you to get the town accountant's signature, whichever is easier.
That's probably better, to get it that way, and then we can make sure. Because I'm not going to be able to do much with it until early this week anyways.
Okay. Yeah, so I can get them back to you on Monday.
Okay.
I'll leave them with Peter. Unless it's a more convenient place.
Let me figure it out. And we'll get it sorted out. Yep, I'll reach out to the town accountant as well. Okay, I'll be in touch with that.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Garrett.
I'll be back to you Monday. Thanks.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Good night.
All right, we're going to continue out of order, because why not talk about more things that are broken? Many of the folks out there will have heard from the selectmen's meeting in the newspaper that we've had a little issue with the generator here at the school. Right before the last big storm and that deep freeze that we were in, they came up to test fire the generator, and it didn't really work.
Correct.
I think that's probably the politest way to say that.
That's a very nice way to say it.
Things blew apart, and so on and so forth. So we, well, we had that storm, and in some ways, luckily, the weather was bad enough that we didn't need to be in school for Thursday and Friday, because we couldn't be, because we didn't have the generator. We were able to obtain, thanks very much to Peter's extensive efforts, to get a temporary generator here. It's not free. We are paying, I think it was, what was it, 20,000, 2,200 for the first week, and then 1,500 for each week thereafter or so.
Correct.
So that's, the clock is ticking on the generator that's out there in the parking lot, making school pick up nice and fun. And also, we have spent quite a bit of time running around, well, talking about this, and running around trying to get some idea of what to do next. There's always the option of repairing that, but we'll get into what the issues are with that. We also reached out, Peter reached out, to three different generator companies and received estimates for replacement of the generator. Both replacing the existing generator that's here, which is a 100-kilowatt generator, and also replacing it with a larger model, which would range between 125 to 150 kilowatt. Generally, the thinking was that if we could go with a slightly larger generator, that we would be able to make better use of that. And just a level set on our existing generator that doesn't work. It was installed back in 2003. It powers the well, and it powers the fire pumps for the sprinkler systems, which is why we cannot be, have the building occupied if the generator is not functional. It does some emergency lighting, and that's it. So we have a big generator out there that, because of its size, doesn't allow for, for instance, and thinking of this last storm that we had, it would not have been able to have been very helpful, even if it was working, if we had lost power and this building had sat for multiple days at, you know, four to 12-degree temperatures, which we had. Which certainly creates some concern for pipes breaking and significant damage to the building, thus creating more issues with trying to get back to school, plus cleaning up classrooms, and so on and so forth. The other piece that we have is that right now, for emergency shelter, the town's emergency shelter is the townhouse, which, you know, has been working okay, but it would be certainly much more beneficial to have a bigger building available, a building with an actual kitchen and bathrooms and space to accommodate should we have issues in the future. So what we have for the committee to look at tonight is the results of the work that has been done so far. I'll also let you know that I did meet with the selectmen right after this happened, and we talked with them. Selectmen haven't met in session since that time, but I have spoken with Christine Joy about this. She is well aware of the issues. The selectmen were very supportive of us trying to find a solution. One of the selectmen, in fact, brought up, well, could we do something to make sure that we get the school more functional, so that we could use it for a shelter, which are things that some of us were thinking about as well. So here we are. Any questions from you guys at this point? Peter, are there points you'd like to add to that?
The quick fix in my head, knowing a ton about this, was let's just get the right parts that we need and get what we have up there repaired. South Shore Generator has been servicing that generator since it's been out there. They gave me an initial price, it would be about $6,000 for parts alone. I said that I need to get a little bit more of a firm number, so that I can present it to the committee. They came back to me today and basically said they're not recommending a repair option, but they did give me a price, and that was $15,500. Everybody that came out to take a look at what we have here strongly recommended that we consider a new machine. Our electrician came out and he gave some thoughts. He asked for some numbers, which I did provide to him. He did not get back to me. Essentially, what he said was, you couldn't get hurt if you go bigger. But if you put something here that's either undersized or even of equal size, you're not going to get anything more out of it, which is, I think, exactly what you were just stating. So his very soft recommendation is, you should probably get something bigger. He said, you don't know what the technology of the future is going to be, you don't know how many more things you're going to want to put onto the generator. The one piece that became fairly clear was that heating the entire building was not going to be a realistic option. We had a bunch of people that came in and said, you'd need to relay here and relay there to get power to the unit vents. It just, it didn't seem like a realistic option. That being said, I'm not overly concerned about the unit vents, because they have the glycol in the pipes, which would, I don't know what temperature glycol freezes, but you'd have some time. But the best option sounded like, if we beef up and get something a little bit bigger, we can provide heat to certain areas. And I think that one of the quotes did a fairly nice job of tackling what I perceive as the needs of the generator for the building. Some things to consider as well, some of the companies had said that they would replace the rental generator at a reduced price. One of the companies said that they would absorb the cost entirely of having a rental out there until the new machine is online or it'd be hooked up. So, I mean, and at $1,500 a week, as you said, John, that's pretty serious for us to consider, I think.
And I think one of the other points to note is that this isn't something that is sitting on a shelf at the generator companies. So this is typically something that takes a fair amount of lead time to get, and I think we had heard eight to 10 weeks.
Correct.
So you start doing the math there. One of the other things we had thought when all of this had happened originally is that if you could get an inexpensive generator rental, that we would be able to just do that and hold off till we could get the town meeting, make sure everything was done, and we are not in that position, and the selectmen agreed with us there. Christine, could I, I know we had looked into this as well, because we have sort of a special situation here. Could you give a little color to the board about that?
About this being an emergency event?
Yes.
This seems to me that it does qualify as an emergency event. I went to Chapter 30, the manual procurement laws for obtaining goods and services, with some guidance. And what I was able to find is, if the situation engages the health or safety of the people of the property due to an unforeseen emergency, that would qualify as an emergency. That would qualify under 30B as an emergency. Under 30B, the procurement laws, you still would need to use the procurement laws to the extent possible. So for instance, based on the scope of this, we would still need to either be soliciting quotes or doing some type of advertising for this. So I have given Peter some information that I have on the form that we use to procure, to get this information, so that it does fit into our format. And then we would just need to give some notification that this is what we had to do and why we had to do it, that we had, because of the emergency situation, the timing involved. And the measure that we're using right now is just a, is a temporary measure for the moment, so that we can occupy the building. We can't continue with that, so we would have to move on to the next phase. So based on the information that Peter has obtained, we could fit that into the format that we would need to complete to do the next step.
And then to review, so what we have sort of in front of us, repair, as Peter said, we have one quote for that, which is the company that has typically done, worked on that generator, is $15,500. We have, we have three companies that, you'd reach out to four of them. One, this was not, this was a bigger job than actually they would typically deal with. The three companies did respond. So for a 100-kilowatt generator, South Shore given us a price of just under $40,000, $39,451.62. New England Generator, so clearly we've got some clarity here, is $39,575. I would make a distinction there. South Shore Generator said we'd get a 50%, at the 50% rate for rental generator, which puts us at about 750. New England Generator said it was included, regardless of which option we went with. Power Products is a third company that we reached out to. They had, their input was that 100 kilowatts is a good period. And so they said, well, they would recommend at a minimum going to the 125-kilowatt generator. And so that comes in from them at $68,000, with a $500 a week rental generator cost. Going to the larger models, so Power Products only gave us the one, which is sort of, which sort of really fits more to the larger, they don't feel that the 100 is correct. So they, South Shore Generators, to 130 kilowatt, was $44,023.96, plus the 50% of a monthly rate. So that's the monthly rate, so it's a weekly, monthly, same. I guess, is the monthly rate cheaper than the weekly?
I think when it broke down, it was the same figure.
So roughly. And for New England Generator, they recommended 150 kilowatt for the next step up, for $57,285. And again, that includes the rental generator through installation.
One other piece of information is, South Shore has a Generac generator.
Yep.
And Power Products and New England Generator are Kohlers.
Okay.
The Kohler units are commercial grade.
By the way, this is Karen Deaglo, our facilities and maintenance person.
The other one is more of a residential grade, and that's kind of, you're not looking at apples, apples, and what are you?
Garrett, could you call which ones are which again?
The first one, the South Shore generator, is the residential grade generator, where Power Products and New England Generator are doing a Kohler, which is a commercial generator.
So...
Generac, right?
Yes.
Generac. If you were doing one at your house, Generac would be fine.
It does say it's an industrial grade.
Right.
Generac, but Kohler is more reputable.
Just to look at the two Kohler products, the price point on the 125 kilowatts is more than 150 kilowatts, and we get the rental for free once we sign the PO.
Yes.
Also, in the 150, I believe, they're putting in an additional transfer switch?
Yes.
Yeah, so, you know, they've kind of gone through and given, already getting, you know, just to be clear, you know, we're doing as much as we can, as fast as we can here, but, you know, clock is ticking, we're under pressure. It is entirely likely that we can get all of this put in, and everything will be just how we want it, but there is an equally likely scenario that we will have some additional work to do after we get this in, to make sure that we get things swapped, or have to do some tweaking with the HVAC system to be able to know that we can put on this heat over here, or move some things around. So just in full disclosure, we just, you know, there's only so much time here, we don't, time is not on our side at this time.
Later on, you might want to think whether you want your refrigeration freezer from the cafeteria on the emergency generator, so you're not losing product in a power outage. But that's not something you absolutely need to do right now.
So it sounds like, at least for doing the generator, they're going to get us on the way there, because each transfer switch allows it to control the different pieces. Clearly, the, you know, the primary role for this is for the pumps, because we need water, and we need water to come through the sprinklers if there's a fire.
But there needs to be some ambient heat as well.
Well, but that's why you use multiple transfer switches, so you can have, sort of, this is a primary thing. If this is working, and we have enough power, then we'll flip the other switch on, it's how my house is set up that way.
Because we all know, it's great if the pumps are working, but if the water in the lines freeze, and glycol does have, it depends how much glycol's in there, the percentage matters on the freeze point.
Yeah.
If it's only a 20%, you only get down to about 20 degrees Fahrenheit.
Right.
Which we will love.
Yep.
You need to have quite a bit of glycol in to get sub-zero Fahrenheit without freezing that.
So, I mean, I think there's, you know, there's more to go here, but I think that we're going to be well toward what we need. And also, if you're going with a 150-kilowatt unit, you're already, I mean, perspective-wise, my unit that does my whole house is 22. So that's another whole, full, biggest whole-house generator that you can get above what the others are. So there's a decent amount of power there that...
And what is their rate for the rental from South Shore Angles?
That's the 1,500.
We're renting from them currently.
We're currently renting from them.
So if we had that issue on hand for even 50%, we'd be creeping up on that 44,000.
Yeah.
So that's just the base number.
Right.
Whereas the 57 is the whole job, the transfer switch.
Right.
And the extra 20 kilowatts.
Right, because if you add it in for 10 weeks, you're at like 51.5, so you're getting there, so, yeah.
When I spoke to the contractor, he said it's easy, because the boiler room is close to the electrical and everything, it's not like a long line that they're going to have to run from here to there, like for the refrigeration, but it's close, so it's not too expensive, because it's close.
Yeah, that always helps.
Yes.
Because once you get the generator there, then there's all the stuff to hook up.
Yes.
It's the same thing, we ended up having everything right in the same spot. So I did, as I said, I did speak with Christine Joy this weekend, and at that point, we had the information from New England Generator, as well as some of the information from South Shore. She actually said she was thinking it was going to be more. So she wasn't, I mean, we prefer not to spend any of this.
Right.
That's the baseline, but we have the issue, we have to deal with that. I also did catch up with the finance committee chair, Nate Sides, just to let him know that this was going on. And then I think the other piece we should probably touch on is our thoughts about how we're paying for this. And we have to deal with this now. So our thinking was that we would do that, and then we will end up having to go to town meeting, on the special town meeting side of that, and look for a transfer. And we have surplus, we've had all year, surplus in the voc line.
Correct, $105,000.
$105,000, so we won't get close to that, but that's sort of our thinking at this point, is that we would be able to take care of that, won't be this and the rental generator that we've had to pay for for this stub period, take care of that, and then get the money line transferred over. This seemed to be reasonable to both the selectmen when we talked to the full committee, and it seemed to make sense to Mr. Sides as well. They're not as concerned, because it's not affecting their budget this year that they're working on, because it is money within the existing budget, we're just going to need to move it there. We will certainly have to go to town meeting and explain everything that happened here, but hopefully, we will have a good finished story, that we will have a proper generator, so school can be open, and then we will also have a building that is more useful for the town.
Do we have any warranty information from any of these companies on the products?
Okay.
One from New England Generator on the 150-kilowatt, one-year manufacturer's warranty.
Yep.
That's what else this year.
Are there also any service agreements with them? If you go with a particular company, do they offer any... a particular company, do they offer any, you know, six-month service free, or one-year service free, or anything like that? Because I'm assuming whoever the company that installs is going to be...
I had, I had that conversation today, in whether this would be a brand-new vendor, we would most likely end up calling them for service calls. We don't have any kind of a written agreement right now with South Shore Generator?
I don't know if they, I don't know if they offered any, like, if they offered anything, hey, if you go with us, we're going to, we're going to service it free for a year for you, on top of your, your warranty, or whatever, I don't...
Because it's a Kohler unit, you'll probably find many people that are Kohler certified who work on the unit, too.
We hadn't quite gotten that far.
Yeah.
It does look like the Generac unit comes with a bigger warranty. It's a five-year comprehensive warranty, it says, on the proposal.
And that was South Shore Generator?
That's the South Shore Generator. I mean, the other, the other one is so expensive, I don't think it's even within the, I mean, it's, it's a little bitter.
Yeah, no.
Is anybody leaving one way or the other?
Well, my, my thought is, what you brought up, well, having this as, you know, as a new shelter place for the, for the community, you're not going to build it up with a smaller one. It sounds like the, the selectmen are on board with that.
I mean, it's, it certainly was, it was one of the, you know, it was something that we had been talking about, but, you know, selectmen brought up on their own, as a whole separate piece, just, you know, I'd really, they'd really like to see that. John Trainer had said, this is something you'd like to see. And, I mean, it makes, it makes greater sense from protecting this building. This is the biggest investment that the town has in any building, bar none. And granted, we haven't had an issue of that type in the time that it's been here, but that does not mean that we won't. And it just, it seems like we need to do that. And then you also have the issue that, or at least the piece that pops up there with the third vendor here, saying that their concern is that the hundred kilowatt really isn't what we should have to begin with, and that sort of resets everything. So, you know, from, from my perspective, you know, going with the hundred and fifty kilowatt with a product that is well-known from a commercial perspective, seems like a reasonable way to go, and hopefully will provide us with enough extra power. I mean, the, the big draw on the power is the pumps. And so, you know, adding some lighting to that is even, doesn't even really blip. And my guess is, is that you're probably, even the boilers probably isn't going to be a huge power draw. It's, it's, most of it is used up if the pumps are going. And, and I don't know how they, how they set this up, but my thinking would be, is that you would even have things as primary and secondary. And if the pumps are going, you don't need heat. If the fire pumps are going, that's the least of the problems. You know, the well pump takes a fair amount of drain, I mean, it always does, but, so to have that extra ability, and then hopefully with the installation, get ourselves close, if not to where we need to be, to have enough heat running in here that it would help, and make part of the building functional, that would be great.
So I'll make the motion for a super generator bid for the hundred fifty kilowatt machine at fifty-seven thousand two hundred eighty-five dollars, which includes the rental every time we sign the P O.
Which includes the rental.
If there's any discussion on the motion, I'm totally open to this.
You're right there, because even when you add in the rent costs currently, you're, you're getting close to the fifty-seven, so it's, it's almost a wash.
Right, and it's a bigger generator.
Right.
And so there's, there's an incremental cost, just every...
And do these newer generators, with the technology that's out today, are they, are they hooked up to any monitoring system from a company, too, as far as when they do the weekly tests, where it comes back that there's possibly a problem with the, with the generator run, so that they could pick up on something before it's major...
So, one of them, one of them did note that. So I don't remember which, what was not, it was not New England, but one of the, one of the two did note that, so it's something we can follow up on.
Yeah, they just did note that.
As to how that's, how that's done.
That's what your existing system is.
Does it run every week on, for a test?
I mean, mine, mine has a light on it, and you very quickly see if it's unhappy. It turns yellow, or, worse, red. Red is not a good color.
It's always bad.
That's bad. Always bad. Poor red. Who, who picked red to be bad?
It's a great color.
So, so do we have a second on the motion? All right, all in favor?
Sure.
Aye.
Sorry. I have the girls with me.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Okay. I will let, I will let the selectmen know, and I'm planning to go in on Monday anyways to them, so I'll, I'll let Christine Joy know, so she can advise them, but we'll still go in to sort of relay what, what went on with this, and also give them a date on water treatment.
Perfect. Excellent, thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you very much. Okay. That was fun. All right, back to the top of the agenda. Minutes from December eighteenth.
Mr. Chair, make a motion to accept the minutes from December eighteenth, two seven and seventeen.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay. Just from a school committee correspondence perspective, I just wanted to note that circulated around to certain school committee members in the last couple of weeks was from, from another school committee member, discussion about school start times again. And I think I just wanted to make sure that, since it came to me, I figured it was worth making sure that folks in the committee knew that. There's some talk about whether we should be looking at school start times with respect to just Silver Lake, and, and as a separate issue. Seems to me that that would be difficult, given the costs of buses, and how much additional that cost would be, particularly for Plinton. That said, I think, you know, we did, when we talked about school start times, certainly it's a big topic, and it's a continual topic, and you hear about it in the news, I mean, once a week. I mean, it's, it's very regular. That said, you know, we did go and did, we did a whole survey on that. The survey came back straight down the middle of the road, which makes it a little difficult to get a preference set up there, if everyone, half people are four-changing, and half people aren't, and half people are four-going later or going earlier, and so on. So I think, at least from my perspective, you know, while it's always, it's always a worthy discussion, and it's always something that we should keep going there, but I think, you know, as, as the chair of this committee, it would, it would, to me, it would be something that we would deal with only if we were going to do a follow-up survey, to be able to get input from there, or if some other creative ideas come up, such that we can make adjustments that don't have significant impacts on so many of the other issues that are out there, with childcare, busing costs, and all of this. Especially if, now, if, if things have changed out there, and people have a different opinion, then that sort of changes things. But based on the survey, which was a year and a half ago, two years?
Within two years.
Within two years, was fifty-fifty. So I just thought I would note that out there, since it had come around. Okay. Of course, the computer went to sleep. I started to put together annual, our annual report. Clearly, we're talking about water. I guess I got one more year to do that, too. Hopefully, we can say it's all done. Do folks have any other thoughts of things that they would like to see in there? And...
I wouldn't mind us bringing up the adoption of the responsive classroom approach, and maybe our teachers bringing that into the school, and the community meetings that have resulted from that new program shift, and considering the other aspects of how that's changed a little bit of the culture at the school, and the way we approach things.
And do we want that in ours, or in the administration's report?
I think it would probably make more sense coming from the administration's report, but I don't think it would hurt for us to mention that we were very supportive of the idea.
Okay. Would you, would you be interested in giving me a...
Sure.
Paragraph on that? Okay.
Should we put any sort of placeholder on our end about our intention to look at the playground, for a more formal record? I know we've had it in the minutes of our meetings.
We can. I mean, I think it would be a pretty short piece to know that we've done some initial evaluations of playgrounds.
Just to put it on the radar, if anybody reads that, it's a different demographic than who looks at the minutes of our meetings.
Okay. Anything else? And then, I don't think, I don't think I've seen anything about dates for reports from Plinton yet.
I have not seen one.
So we have our, our next meeting is the twenty-sixth. That shouldn't be, I looked the date for mine last year, it was the twenty-first. Well, why don't, why don't we do this? My intention is to get this in draft form to everyone, and then we can approve it at our next meeting. If that turns out to run into some trouble, then maybe we can ask, I will, I will ask you to send comments to Joy, and we'll incorporate as, as we need to. You know, a good chunk of the report is pretty standard, year to year, but the variable content is more of what we're looking at. But we'll go from there. Okay. Unfinished business, just, I don't, I haven't heard anything else about the Denet driveway sign. I was going to follow up on that, but for some reason, got busy with other school committee things. Electricity and water. So I'm going to try and do that for next time. Water treatment, we already did. Playground, I think that's something we're going to take on more over the next meeting or two. Moving on to statin committee reports, administrative review.
We met on the eighteenth, and we reviewed Marie Grable's contract. It's in the process now of coming into Unit Thirty-One for a final vote on February eighth. And the committee is meeting tomorrow to finalize Superintendent Joy's contract, and then I will be meeting with her to review that, to get that ready for the vote on February eighth. Everything is on schedule. I don't see it being a problem. As far as I know, every member is showing up tomorrow, so, which is good, because we have some members that weren't there that we need there in court before we finalize Joy's, so, that's all.
Okay. Nothing for negotiations, Union Thirty-One?
Meeting scheduled February eighth at five o'clock. And that would be to vote the shared cost, budget, and my contract, and Marie Grable's contract.
And where?
High school, large group room.
High school, okay. Okay.
Are you sure?
I'm pretty sure that's where we are. It's in the high school.
Okay.
Yeah.
I can find it.
Just wander the high school halls.
Pack?
There was no reading, because it's also, it was the first.
Okay.
February first, I read this.
Right, thank you. And then policy, we have our second reading?
Yes. So the second reading of the policies, I've not heard from anyone with any questions or concerns. The other three committees have all done a first and second reading. After the second reading, the policies become active, or real, or voted on, I guess, and we will update our policy manual online. We had another policy meeting last evening. We have had three or four at this point, and we have one more scheduled for February fifth at five o'clock. And that will hopefully, not that I don't enjoy spending time with my policy friends, but hopefully that will be our last policy meeting for this year.
Really? You guys were busy last night, then?
We were busy. We're hopeful.
Sorry, I wasn't able to make that.
Yeah, I, yes, it was a very classy meeting. So if anyone wanted to, if you have any questions, please feel free to ask, but otherwise, if we waive the actual reading of the policies, and then accept as a second reading, the policies.
Motion to waive the second actual reading of the policies.
Have a second?
A second.
All in favor? Aye.
Motion to accept the second reading of A D C, B D D, E D E, U D F, U E D A, E E, D B, E E D H, E I A, C E, C H, C H A, C H C, D K C, E B B, E C A, E F C, F A, G B A, G B E A, G B E D, G B, G B, G B L, G B K, G C F, I C slash I C A, I D, I H A M, I H A N A, I H B E A, I J, I J L A, I J O A, I J O B, I M G, J E B, J H D, J I C H, J L C.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All right, all in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
All reflective.
Thank you.
There we go. Capital improvement. Do you want to talk about this here, or should we talk about this with the budget?
Why don't we talk about the budget, that would be easier.
Anything on legislative?
Yes. Last week, there was a vote by the Group Insurance Commission, which supplies insurance to new municipalities and state employees, that eliminated some plans that people are very comfortable with in the state of Massachusetts. Tuff's Health Plan, Harvard Pilgrim Health Plan, and Fallon Health Plan will no longer be available to both people in the G I C. Now, we're part of the Mayflower Insurance Group. Mayflower hasn't come out with its rates for next year yet. We don't know if this will have any impact on Mayflower, just because of the competitive nature of the market, two hundred thousand people have now been taken out of those healthcare systems. But we need to stay tuned. Mayflower's been a little bit unpredictable in the past six years. They've had a zero, a zero, a zero, a one percent increase, a fifteen percent increase, and an eleven percent increase. So we don't know what to expect. Stay tuned, because it has implications for our budgets and for the choices potentially of our employees.
And so will we have input back from that before March?
So the commission made its vote, there's an uproar right now politically.
I heard that.
So we have to stay tuned to what happens. Have you been known, if you care to make your voice heard, there's ample ways to do so.
Okay. There were no single, single signature warrants this month, so we can move on to the principals' report.
Thank you. According to my figures, for January two thousand eighteen, we currently have two hundred and three students enrolled at Denet. We do have some important dates coming up. On January twenty-fifth, we're having our Math Literacy slash Technology Day here at Denet from six to seven-thirty. CASA has a group coming in on February fifth, Hip-Hop Promotes Positivity Enrichment Program, and that's a K-6 show, we're looking forward to that. CASA has their Winter Festival from six-thirty to eight on February ninth. On February twelfth, I believe Grade Five is hosting, the community meeting at two o'clock. On February fifteenth, Grade Four will be having their Washington, D.C. Museum Day. And if this is anything like it was in years past, the kids did an awesome job with it, so I'm looking forward to it. February sixteenth is an in-service day for teachers, no school for students. That happens to be the Friday right before our February vacation, or winter break, from the nineteenth to the twenty-third. And we'll be back here on February twenty-sixth at five o'clock for school meeting.
And Peter, I'm sure people... And Peter, I'm sure people love the idea that they can leave town a day earlier and avoid the higher plane fees for February vacation, but could you just make sure that we remind the parents who might be drifting through February?
I will say no. And I noticed that, and I heard from Jason, that perhaps the committee would like to hear an update on how things are going with our Responsive Classroom Initiative. I give the teachers here an enormous amount of credit, because this has been a huge undertaking and a shift in kinda how we're operating as a school. To back up a little bit, we had all of the kindergarten through grade four teachers went for training this summer, as well as Ms. Cardinal, Mrs. Lynch, I don't forget anybody.
Mrs. Seltzer.
Mrs. Seltzer was there as well. So, we had the majority of our staff go to a training, which is uncommon. It's really uncommon to be able to do it. But everybody was of the same opinion that we wanted to have some kind of a program that promoted expected behaviors that use common language from year to year. I had been familiar with this program from my past experiences, and it's terrific. And I'm seeing some really positive things happening in classrooms. And actually, a lot of my unannounced observations, I seem to have caught on to some kind of, some portion of Responsive Classroom, which would be nice to be able to report. So, I would say right now that K through four is an absolute, they are in one-hundred percent. Grades five and six did not go to the training, but they are definitely incorporating portions of the Responsive Classroom into their day. So, a typical morning would start off, the kids come in, there would be a morning message on the board, the teacher will have written a note, kind of previewing the day a little bit, so that they know what's coming. It's not just gonna be, this is gonna come out of the blue. Typically, after announcements, classes will sit down for a morning meeting. They'll have what's called a greeting, where everybody says hello to, everybody in the room is greeted by one person or another. They usually review the morning message. There's usually some kind of an activator to get either brain breaks, or get everybody up and moving, and get prepared for the day. Everybody is using some form, and again, this is all about behavior management, but almost self-behavior management, that the kids can start to recognize. One of the things that the program really promotes is having an area where, if a child is recognizing that, "My body's a little out of control right now," each room or space in the building has a spot for a cooldown chair. The idea is, we want kids to be able to recognize when they're starting to lose control of their emotional behavior. In some cases, the teachers do need to still make recommendations that maybe you need some time in the take-a-break chair, or the cooldown chair. It's usually, they're invited back into the group. It's been, it's been working very well. The other piece that is, again, a school-wide component to this, is the community meetings. I hosted the first one, kindergarten hosted the second one. A different grade or group of teachers hosts each month. We have a theme, sort of think we did what we're thankful for, that was in, that was in November. January, we did resolutions, and the community meetings are great in that they're inclusive. Everybody is recognizing each other's accomplishments. So, typically, what we've done is the group or the grade level that's hosting, they will, you know, pick out some activities that everybody is able to participate in. One of the more fun activities, which just kinda came about, was at the end of each community meeting, everybody's anxious to know who's hosting the next one, and I just have to say the word drumroll, and you've got two hundred kids that are working in unison to create quite a rumble in the cafeteria. As far as, is this program working? I would say yes. I sat down with Mrs. Markelini, and we tried to look at a case by case of how many issues were we seeing, or behavior referrals are we seeing, where it's children and children having conflict? I mean, kids are always gonna make mistakes and need assistance. We recognize that. But we are not seeing nearly as many kids who are, quote, getting into fights with each other, not physical, but, you know, arguing with each other. That's being reinforced by the teachers, that's being reinforced by Mrs. Markelini going down and doing her paths programs. That ties in with the social-emotional component. But I think just to have a common language, so that when somebody leaves Mrs. Resmini's room and goes to, for example, Ms. Clausen's room, you're not having to learn a whole new set of rules, and a whole new set of, well, this is what she calls, and this is what, this is what we have to do when this happens. So, I think we're gonna see, I think we'll be able to weigh in even better next year, having a year under our belt. But the kids are genuinely excited about the community meetings. Like I said, everybody gets involved, everybody's up and moving. We're celebrating each other's accomplishments. So, when kindergarten went in October, they had plenty to celebrate, because they learned so much in the first month of school. Activities that are, that they did were very much harder kindergarten, and right up through sixth grade, you could see the kids doing, I remember doing that in kindergarten. It's just felt, it's felt like much more of a tight-knit community. It's a little bit difficult to quantify, but I, I'm loving what I'm seeing in classes every day.
I think that will be interesting to see, especially the first couple months of next year. You know, how much, because there's always, there's always that, oh, my god, I'm back from summer, what am I supposed to do? There's always gonna be that reintegration piece. But if you're reintegrating into the new classroom with a new teacher, but there's this additional, you know, sort of structure that's underlying, that should be pretty interesting.
I'm looking forward to it.
I have to commend your staff as well, of how many of them took this upon themselves over the summer to get trained in the program. It's not a minor undertaking.
No.
You know, it's a shift for a lot of people, and for some people, it's, oh, I always did this, but I never had the language to put around it, or maybe I'll try it a little bit differently. But I loved you talking about the meetings being inclusive, and you were talking about internal behavior management, which we all know is regulation. You know, if we can, if we can get kids to internalize some of those regulation techniques themselves, how far that goes academically, socially, just relationally. So, thank you very much, and appreciate the update. And we wanted you to know we support the program and the initiative, and we're still interested in it. And if there's ever anything we can do to support the staff moving forward, let us know.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yes, and thank you. Appreciate that. Any updates from CASA?
They had a brick fundraiser that they just got in, that was very successful, and then Holiday Bazaar was also successful. I can answer your sign question, I think. They have quotes out right now, and they were just looking at finalizing some of those numbers. Peter touched upon the enrichment that was happening, as well as the winter festival that was upcoming. And I think that is it.
One note on the sign. Can we try and figure out if we know where this, if we know where the power comes in up at the school?
I think they looked into that, but I can double-check that.
Yeah, because I think that would be something worthwhile, to have some level of lighting down there.
For the generator and stuff like that?
Well, no, just for the sign.
Yep. They looked into that piece of lights.
They did find it?
Yes.
Because I know there was some question as to where the, where the breaker was up here, or how they're...
Yes.
Because it's been off for a number of years.
Not to get too sidetracked on this, but since it's come up, we had an issue a few years ago about the sign actually being lit.
Yeah, well, it can be lit.
Okay.
Yeah.
The bylaws provide for it. What we will, what we will want to do with that, and when they, one of the things that I think we'll be looking for is to make sure that it's, you know, that it's, clearly at this point, it's gotta be LED lighting, and that it's also downlit. So, you know, you'd want it really to be something mounted onto the sign that would come down over the face of it, which would therefore not provide, it's gonna light the sign and not the neighborhood.
Yes.
Which I think was part of the issue before.
Okay. Thank you.
But we also didn't have the clarity back then about signage and what can be done, and lighting and all that, so, thank you.
Can I just add one?
Yep, sure.
So, was there been any talk, I know I keep bringing this up, because my son's in it, is there been any talk for an Eagle project on the sign?
Not that I heard at that meeting.
Okay, because that would be, in my opinion, if there is a young person that wants to do their Eagle, and they, because they all have to do the end of the project, it would just be a perfect, I think it would be, because the person would have been in the school at some point.
Yep.
I know they did the library, they did it in the, in the stone, something like that, where the sign is now stone, you know, we got this, you know. In my opinion, just throwing up another wooden sign is not really, I mean, I'd like to see something that's, you know, this is the Dennehy, you know.
Maintenance is gonna be, you know, one of those things that we'll need to ask about. You know, not that that sign hasn't done a tremendous job, considering how much painting and everything that's on there. But as I understand, that that sign was all taken down and completely redone by someone up on Ring Road, and then put back up again at one point in time.
That's my understanding as well.
So, that's, I think, predates both of us on that.
I mean, you did a great, the person that did the library.
Right, yeah, I know. And, but that's the nice, that's the nice piece about that. There's no maintenance. You know, and doesn't have to be no maintenance, but it's gonna, if it ends up being painted, it's, how are they doing that? What are they, you know, what sort of life is that gonna have? Because anything painted is at some point gonna need to be repainted.
And I think they were looking at the low-maintenance options for those signs, but I can ask you when I go to the next one.
Yes, if there's somebody, there's gotta be somebody.
Yep.
And I'm sure they know that, but they're gonna have to come, come here before they move ahead, so, all right. Christine?
Thank you. There's really, there's really information to share on our current financial. This will be a couple of updates on page one of the detail, two-thirds of the way down the page.
Okay, hold on one second, hold on one second, let me just find it here. Sorry.
Did it come today with Lisa's email?
Oh, it did, it's the new one, yes.
So, it's in today's email, that is the three attachments.
Yeah, that's right.
It says exciting information around it. On page one of the detail, just an update of the professional development section, that deficit has grown to five thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. And we talked about a lot the past few months, that we have a lot of new and younger teachers that are taking advantage of moving their career along. I have increased that line for the new year budget, I've increased that to eight thousand dollars, so let's see how this year's budget goes along.
And there was an overlap. That's part of why it's as high as it is, that there was some stuff that came in that's really from, given when it's, given when you get the credits.
Right, there's a fine line between when you actually take the credit, which contract year you're working in.
Right.
So, sometimes there is an overlap, as those things happen at the beginning of the year, then towards the end of the year. And hopefully, you have that all worked, the parameters that worked out. The other piece of information I wanted to mention is on the middle of page three of the detail. There's really not much more to do. The out-of-district, out-of-district special education transportation, the deficit right now of six thousand twenty-nine dollars, that has grown since last month. And that's right now where they're projecting to be for the end of the year. We have, we know on the deficits, within the tuition account, you'll see there are a couple of deficits, but it's just because of the way we're categorizing the payments that we've made for tuition this year. The category as a whole still has a surplus. And then, I did wanna mention that on the very last page, under out-of-district vocational, we do have a significant surplus of a hundred and five thousand dollars. We had budgeted, we had left the amount for eighteen that we had for seventeen, so that would have supported about eight and a half students, tuition and transportation. We had five students attend. Of those five that are attending, three are graduating. So, we have been able to significantly reduce next year's budget by eighty thousand dollars, because we will have two returning students, and that balance that I've left, and that leaves slots for three to four students. So, hopefully, that'll be a good number of reductions that I'm looking for. I think that was it for the update on the financial. I'm not sure any questions.
And then, the special ed transportation, that would be offset by the special ed duration, because it's all on that line?
Budgets, the special education, it's the full category of special education. So, within that category, the surplus funds.
At this point, we have a surplus in.
Correct, to offset that, correct.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, in the special ed, okay. Okay. I'll just put it to you.
Thank you. So, in your packet, you'll find a November/December progress report, and I'll just highlight a few items from the report. The Title II-A grant has been amended to reflect an allocation increase. It was only a slight increase of a hundred and thirty-five dollars. And just to give people a sense of what Title II-A is used for, it is, it's used to improve educator effectiveness. So, most of the money goes to professional development opportunities, or supplies that are related to professional development opportunities. Also, you'll see the goals of the district curriculum accommodation plan listed there for you, and our principals have been asked to review the district curriculum accommodation plan with their support teams, to review the process, to see if they have any questions, and then we will reconvene as a group to finalize and move forward. We'd also like to take some of the social-emotional interventions and strategies that we've been learning about and employing throughout the year, and incorporate them into our district curriculum accommodation plan. In, in general, curriculum accommodation plans can focus on both the academic and behavioral, social-emotional needs of students. But most curriculum accommodation plans tend to focus on the academic, so it's gonna be nice to see some of the insights that our teachers have gained from the trainings that they've participated in, and the work they've done over the last couple of years, and to really incorporate that into our curriculum accommodation plan as well, to help provide more targeted assistance to students if and when they need it. So, just to review, a district curriculum accommodation plan is a general education plan for students who may need help in an academic area, socially, emotionally, or behaviorally. And it's a great opportunity to personalize education for students that is not, doesn't have to be a plan that they're on forever. It's very fluid, and it can be altered, but it allows us to monitor and help students in the general education population who may not have or qualify for an IUP or a 504 plan. And then, the wellness committee sent out a brief survey. It was a very brief survey to parents of students who use epinephrine auto-injectors. And that was spurred by a push from the Massachusetts Medical Society urging schools to consider revisiting their policies on whether or not all students have to bring an EpiPen or an epinephrine auto-injector to school. And the majority of our students, and I have listed here for you the results of that survey, majority of the respondents preferred to provide to the nurse only when their child has a field trip. And the majority of parents would give their children permission to self-carry their epinephrine with physician approval. This gives our, our health and wellness committee, you know, some, a sense of where parents stand on the issue. The school would still maintain a minimum supply of auto-injectors, and this would give parents the choice. So, if a parent still wanted to provide an auto-injector for their child to have at school as well, they could. They would have to provide one for field trips. That would still be standing. But it gives us some insights in terms of how parents feel about the need to provide EpiPens for school. They can be very costly, especially if insurance doesn't carry your full cost, and most do not, so.
And just one thing on that, I think it's coming up in the next batch of policies, right?
Yes.
So, part of the reason that this was done was to amend the policy that we have to require, to keep them on file.
And we addressed that at the last night's policy meeting.
Right, so, that will be, that will be coming back through, but...
Can I, can I just, I did notice the response was low.
Yes, so, the, yeah, it was sent to ninety-five emails, and so, there's some duplicate emails there, because some parents have multiple emails, and multiple parents. It's still a low response rate. Our hope is, is that parents completed one for their family, and so, sometimes you might even have multiple children, but only one parent filling out the survey.
I understand that. My thought is that with a change to the pens, that, you know, it's pretty serious. That I'm not really sure if an email for the survey should, should have went out. Maybe a letter. I know we don't wanna spend any money on posters or anything like that, but I can tell you that in my household, the email was missed. So, you did not get my response. It didn't come to me. It came to, to my wife, and she just overlooked it. She saw that it said Wellness Committee, and deleted it. So, I don't know really how many other households have done that. Twenty-eight people's not really, I don't really consider that a successful survey, to find out where everybody's gonna be at, or just to make everybody aware of what we're doing with that.
And just to follow up, this started spring of last year, when we received a letter from the Medical Society of Massachusetts. What we're... What we're looking to do is to still, parents who wish to send their EpiPen in with the children may, but it would no longer be a requirement.
Right, no, I understand that, I'm just, and my, I understand the whole thing.
Okay.
My, my thought is just when you have families that have the EpiPens. And, I don't have food allergies, and I had regular allergies, but I went through the treatments. I'm just saying that when people don't deal with it every day, I'm not saying they put on the back burner, but it's, it doesn't really seem like the top priority because it doesn't affect them, you know what I'm saying?
Sure.
That's just been my experience. If I was at somebody's house or whatever, oh, you'll be fine. No, I'm not fine.
Yeah.
Are you saying I'm fine because you're fine?
Yeah.
Right.
For sure.
So I, I don't know, I would rather see that, I, I mean, you would think you'd see a higher number, because these are, these are folks that have pens that are going to save somebody's life, so I would have thought it would be more response.
But the pens are still there, they're just, the school ends up paying for it, so I, I, there's, I'm assuming there's going to be some communication going out to the parents for the new school year, to talk about the new policy and what they can and can't do, which, you know.
No, I'm fine with that, all I'm saying is, the communication maybe shouldn't be in an email.
Yeah.
That's all.
Although.
Because I'm as low, how many was it, 97?
Yeah, but a third response is actually good for a survey. I hate to say it, but.
I disagree, but.
Most people don't, you know, you get a 25% response, and it's considered huge for most surveys.
I know, but what I'm saying is, on, on the scope of this.
Yep, and some of it goes into SCAM and all of that.
The severity of this, that's all I'm saying, is that the response, I would have thought would have been higher.
Yep.
And I'm only telling you what happened in my household.
Right.
Is that the email got deleted.
Sure.
And it probably happened in everybody's, because the families that deal with this every day know how serious it is. And I'm not saying the school's not getting rid of them, just, just so everybody goes on board of what we're doing with the EpiPens, that's all.
And I can certainly share that with the Wellness Committee, and I, I don't think the survey was ever intended to be a notification.
No, I'm not saying it wasn't, I'm just.
It was more to try to glean some feedback from the community to help inform the policy subcommittee, because it was coming up for their review.
I think if we were, if we, the policy, if the, if what the recommendation was, was the flip of that, I think it would be much more important to have made sure that we had a much greater, so in other words, if the, if the flip was, we're going to require all parents to provide an EpiPen.
Which is what we currently do.
You know, then I would be much more concerned about that, but where we're relaxing that requirement and acknowledging that we may end up buying a few more EpiPens per year, and being comfortable with that additional potential budget, but it doesn't appear that we had that issue. I, I think on the flip side, you know, if, if it were the other way, I, I would completely agree that we should have probably made sure we heard from pretty much everybody, but it's a relaxation, hopefully. Hopefully it's beneficial.
Good.
And just for clarification, another point, this was the entire Silver Lake Regional School District Union 31, this isn't just the, the numbers reflecting.
None of them.
Yep.
Lana Tereshko and Karen Lund are going to be offering a workshop for educators on the 20th and the 27th, meeting the needs of English language learners in the classroom. This will help educators to earn 15 PDPs towards licensure. This is not the same as the SEI endorsement course, which poor academic teachers of English language learners are able, are required to, to take. And our professional development day is going to be coming up on February 16th, we will once again have a focus on social-emotional learning, growth mindset, and there will be a variety of topics for staff to choose from, following the keynote that all relates to social-emotional learning, which has been the, the focus of our professional development for the past year and the year before, I believe. And then finally, in your packet, and so you have in your packet the professional development schedule to date, which highlights the professional development that has taken place on a district-wide scale or pertains to groups, particular groups of teachers in our district. It was also listed in the newsletter, which came out in, on the first week of January. And then last is the annual report card, which has been sent out to parents, but also posted on our website. And the report card is in your packet, and it contains a lot of the same information that we have gone over with regards to MCAS, but it also includes some additional statistical information and data, such as attendance, discipline, high school completion, that you may find interesting, and that's been included in your report as well.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi. How are you?
Good. Money, money, money.
So I have the version one of the Denit Elementary School Budget, and I did give hard copies of this, just because I think that will be helpful for you to be able to refer back and forth. What we've done is tried to build a little bit of information for you on how we've built the budget for Denit. So I'm going to go through the folder for you, and these are some presentations that we've had, but just sort of to remind you that when we build a budget, it's really a fairly involved and lengthy process, and I just want you to understand how we come up with the numbers that we do. So on the left side of the packet are all the documents that are the supporting documents that we have used to build the budget. The first thing is the planning schedule and the timeline, and it is something that we have tried very hard to follow. The only thing that is slightly different than the original timeline is that we are doing the public budget hearing in February as opposed to March, to make sure that we are able to fit that in. But the timeline gives us an opportunity to talk about how we built the budget, which we did this fall, we had Marie come in, we had Steve Pello come in, that provided some additional information, along with Melissa Farrell, our curriculum coordinator for K6. The next thing in the packet is Marie Grable's presentation, the special education presentation. Marie came in December, and she did a wonderful presentation, giving us an overview of the different programs that we currently have, and also some programs that we will be beginning. And at this January school committee meeting, Silver Lake did vote to add two programs as a revolving fund to work with our older students. One is an 18 through 22 transition program for students who still require services but are no longer in need of a high school program. So we'll be housing that at our high school, we're really excited about that, and also the continuation of our language-based program at the middle school, which we began last year. So she has information in here, if you weren't able to make that meeting. The next piece in the packet is the information that goes with our technology budget, and Steve Pello came and he talked about what our requirements were in Denit. We have excellent technology in Denit, Steve has done a great job, Jerry O'Reilly has been phenomenal. And we also now have a technician who comes in one day a week to provide some additional support and help with computers, which has really been wonderful and taken off a lot of pressure from Jerry, who's always gone above and beyond her job description to help us all out here at the Denit. The next piece of information was the curriculum and technology budget considerations, and that was a presentation that Melissa did in November, and she went through and listed all the different materials that we need for our curriculum materials, including some of our online assessments, the STAR, which provides information for our teachers in terms of their needs for implementation. The one thing I wanted to make sure to note is on the back of Melissa's presentation, where it's, it's in yellow, and it says math curriculum update. One of the things that we have is in grades four and five, we have a, a contract where we receive workbooks every year, and that contract ends in the 18, at the end of the 18, 19 school year, next year. So what we're going to try to do this year is to pilot some additional math programs to see what is out there. When we bought in science, you may remember, we split it between two fiscal years, so that it wasn't so much money in every, any given year. You may remember, we piloted, and then at the end of the year, we had already had budgeted half of the amount, and then in July, we purchased the other half of the material. So we had the full amount by September, but it wasn't such a hit for the towns. So that amount is not in the budget, okay, at this time, because it's sort of an addition. I just want you to be aware of it, we have presented all of the elementaries that way. I just want you to be aware that if you're interested, it is something that we could add to the textbook expenses here, and that's underneath that yellow. Yes. Yes. It's in the yellow on the backside of Melissa's thing. The other thing that we did this year, and I've done this for all the districts, and I think it will be very helpful as we go forward, is I asked everybody to sort of do an inventory of all of our materials. It was something that we really had not done before, and Melissa did a grand job of providing an inventory of all of the Silver Lake, well, Kingston, Plimpton, Halifax, Union 31 curriculum materials, and we've also done this on a secondary level. It was a little bit more involved and time-consuming, certainly on the secondary level, considering all the course offerings we have, but luckily people are still talking to me, and I think it provides additional information that's very helpful as we're building our curriculum. And then we have our enrollment numbers, and at the time that this was done, October 1, we were at 207, I think we're slightly down to 203 at this point in time. And we also have a total of 210 between the middle school and the high school, in terms of the numbers of students that we have available. We will be having, there will be a, for the next several years, it's sort of an interesting thing as we go forward to watch how the Denit has some ups and downs with numbers. The small class will be that grade three class as it moves forward, and that will have some impact in terms of it. On the backside is the percentage of students that are in the union, in terms of the percent that Plimpton will owe for the union, the shared cost, which will be the February 8th meeting, and also for Silver Lake. You'll notice that Plimpton, even though it doesn't impact the elementary, for the Silver Lake assessments, they have a large increase. They go from 11.4% of the region to 12.3%, and for Plimpton, that's going to be a pretty heavy hit. What it means is they have more students proportionally on the secondary level, their growth was higher there. So it's, it is less than 1%, but for the town, it will probably be a fairly heavy hit. In February, on the 8th, we'll be doing our assessment presentation, so the governor's numbers are due out tomorrow-ish. Yep, and so once we have those, we'll have a better sense of what this will mean. And then the last thing in terms of the supporting document is our planning for success, and this is what you would formally have known as a strategic plan, and it's really to continue to meet the needs of diverse learners and to focus on social-emotional learning. Our budget has been built trying to make sure we're meeting these goals. And so the left side are the supporting documents, which will hopefully help to explain the right side, the numbers. Anybody have any questions on the left? And again, you have received all of that information, I just thought it might be easier for you if you had it all in one place. And I will apologize to the trees beforehand. So the next thing on the right side is you have a write-up from Pete, and you also have the budget. If it's okay, I'd like to just go through the write-ups that Pete did first. Pete put together some information about the school. He went back and referred to his school improvement plan, the six goals, and again, you'll notice that they fit in nicely with our meeting the needs of diverse learners, our planning for success model. He also included some information regarding the MCAS results, and some different areas that have been a focus in the district, technology, curriculum. And then at the bottom are some proposed needs, and these are areas that would be considered more of capital items, none of these items are in the budget. Okay, again, I stress, none of these items are in the budget. The first one that is of importance is the telephone system. The system is almost 15 years old and terribly outdated, replacement parts are very scarce, and a couple of years ago, the company that installed the system had to reach out to retired worker in order to help us service the current system. So that's something that would be considered a priority. The roof over the kindergarten, the library, and grade six is developing some new leaks. And Cara Dieglo, our new facilities manager, who came in to help us out with the generator information, we are having the roof professionally assessed to get a sense of the numbers. However, the temperature needs to be 60 degrees, if memory serves me correctly.
Sixty or seventy.
Sixty or seventy, for them to be able to use a laser light, which helps them to see leaks, and I'm, I think I'm more or less correct, if anybody wants to correct me, I will not be insulted in the least, but I believe that's more or less accurate. The playground has been something that is definitely in need of some updating. Jason and John have been working on that, we really appreciate it. We're still working on getting some rough design and approximate costs. And the last thing is just key fobs, is something that we've talked about. Again, we did this in the order of probably priority, the playground, I think, would be a community, the.
Yeah, I mean, I think for the, for the playground, we would be looking to, first of all, there is, apparently there are grants available, so, I was just starting to look into those, Elizabeth, the new town coordinator, or town administrator, so I may put you in touch with her to talk through that. There were some presentations done at Old Colony Planning Council, apparently there's money. So that's one piece of that. Second of all, I think we would be looking to, and we've talked about it before, use some school choice money there. And then probably also have to spend some money this year out of that to get a plan, an actual hard plan together with any engineering that needs to be done to figure out what that cost would be to go to, go to Community Preservation Committee in October of this year for that. Phone system is on our capital plan, and it was on the capital plan to go in for the next fiscal year.
Okay.
We put it a year out. The roof is a big open question.
Yes.
And we'll have to have a talk with FinCom about that, because I'm not sure how we, how we deal with that. You know, with respect to it having some limited leaks, maybe we need, I mean, I don't know what to do about that, because it's, it's not gonna, if it's, if it's just patch, I mean, it's not going to be something that we're going to be able to do a huge roof thing right way, but if we're just patching it, that's probably not going to run under a capital.
Right.
Planning amount either. The key fobs, to me, it seems like we would put that on to our capital plan. For a year or two out. If I can ask for some additional color on that, that would be helpful, because I would like to speak to FinCom about that when we meet with them. You know, more than just, it's a card and you go beep, then you get in the door, you know, what, what does that give us for security? What does that give us for controls? Is it all, you know, computerized, are we able to track that, you know, onsite and offsite, that type of thing, so that we can really explain what the full benefit of that will be? I think that would be good.
And now comes the, meet at the budget.
Yep.
Which is the actual budget. Again, the way we have, our new accounting software provides a different type of budget, so it will look a little bit different for, to you. There's things in this budget that are very helpful, we have the 14, 15 actual, 15, 16 actual, 16, 17 actual, the budget that we're currently in, 17, 18, and then proposed. So the new accounting software allows us to have five years, which I think is very helpful in terms of giving you some background information. There's a couple of things I wanted to try and point out to you. One thing you'll notice, professional development, that it looks like it's a massive increase, and it says 66.67%. It's only going from 6,000 to 10,000, and I must be honest with you, I do not think it's enough. I think that is still too low, I think we will probably go into deficit as we are now. We have had several teachers that have retired, wonderful teachers over the last several years, and we have newer teachers who are in the process of getting their masters, so are making more use of the professional development funds. I believe we are in deficit 4,000-ish this year already.
Oh, it's over 5,000.
Over 5,000, so I'm not even sure that that increase is enough, to be honest with you, but this is a first draft, and, and again, it might be something to consider.
Joy, can we, I know this is the first read, and this is the first draft, but is this also taking into account the zeroing out of the grant funding that we have as a district for professional development as well?
If we zeroed that out, all the professional development, because that is the main way we bring in speakers on the professional development days, we fund the Bridgewater MACS class that's extremely popular, that Kevin Sawyer runs, Math and Computer Science, and we also have English there. It's about 90,000-ish now? I think it's about 90,000 these days, and.
Sure.
Teacher quality. Teacher quality. Yes. Overall, the teacher quality grant, if that grant actually goes away, it would be devastating to our district, well, to all districts.
Because we saw quite a bit of erosion.
Yes.
And some potential zeros coming through some of the grant funds.
Yes.
So, I just wanted to make sure that was very clear. With a 66% increase, which is only $6,000.
But none of, but none of this money is for that.
Mostly, this is for teachers.
This is all for teacher reimbursement.
This is, this is, this is just teacher works, this is just graduate class increase.
But my point is, it would be more, we would be putting more pressure on our teachers as individuals to go and reach out for those PDPs and for those graduate credits, because they wouldn't be able to do it in-house in the district under some of these grant-funded areas.
Right.
So, this would be drawn upon even more than we're seeing in this current fiscal year.
Right. And Jason is referring to when Marie presented, she presented that some of the special ed grants that used to fund professional development are zeroed out, if you may remember.
I mean, I'll just say it already, I mean, if, I don't want 10,000 there, if that's not going to do it.
Okay. All right. We, will we look at this, you know, what, what happens is the first round?
I don't, I don't want to leave, I don't want to end up with a $4,000 surplus at the end of the year either.
Right.
But, I mean, if we already know that 10 is, we're already at 11, and you're expecting that same...
I would tend to think...
...pattern, and we're, we're still, we're still five months left in the year.
Same pattern, or more excessive.
Or more.
Right.
Well, I mean, we can't, I don't know that we can plan for that, but even at the bare minimum, if we're planning for what's been going on, and we're already at 11, and we might finish up at 13 or 14, then we should have a right, real number in there.
Okay. Will, will we look at what's out there and what is on the horizon to the best of our ability? The next one that you'll notice is a textbook program, and as I mentioned, we do not have in here the idea of the half of the math adoption for this year. So, that would be where that would go, if the committee wanted us to see the impact of that. The, what else would really sort of point out?
Custodial.
Custodial is based on the contracts that we currently have in district, and utility service is actually a slight decrease. Christine can talk a little bit about the contracts that we have and why she was able to reduce that slightly. If you want, sorry.
I wasn't sure if you wanted to go right now.
Yeah, sure.
Currently, with our, our gas contract ends July 31, 2018, and even though we can't renew right now, we're actually talking to our, the person that we deal with on what those prices are looking like. So, I have built in a slight increase based on those prices. Our electricity contract goes through November of 2019, so I've just made some minor changes based on updated information.
Okay. And then, the next area is special education, and you'll notice, I'm sorry, the overall increase for regular day is 4.2%. You may remember, over the last several years, we have had extremely nominal increases. This seems to be the year that it's caught up with us a little bit in terms of, of some of the areas that we haven't, haven't really been funding in terms of some of the supplies and some of those other areas. Special education is the only district of our districts that has not had a massive increase, so they're very fortunate, and it's only a 0.78% increase in special education for Plimpton. We put in circuit breaker at 55% for, to begin with. Each 5% increase in circuit breaker is an additional $6,000.
For Denit?
For Denit.
Just, just to point out, on the overall regular day, that's a, from 2014...
Yes.
...to the current proposed first draft budget. That's a nine and a half percent increase from 2014.
Right.
So...
Yeah, it's very long.
I mean, and when you look at it overall, because of the ability to adjust folk, at least for now, you know, you're still coming in, and again, we've already said you've got to up a few things. You're under, you're, you're half, just over half a percent.
Right. Yeah. It's, I think it's a very fair budget. I think it will provide what is needed. I, you know, I do think there could be a little bit of tweaking around the edges.
Yeah.
Certainly, there's some things that we would love to do in addition to these, but, you know, again, this is just a first run at a budget.
Yeah.
And then, for vocational education, again, if you look at it from last year, we had money in for eight students. I believe Christine talked a little bit about this. Five attended, three will be graduating at the end of this year. So, we have two concrete students, two real people.
Yeah.
And we saved enough in there for an additional three students applying. We don't know how many students will apply. They have until April 1st to apply to the agricultural school.
And should, should someone, should someone apply between now and then, we may adjust that.
Exactly. And then, we have one person on longevity, and shared cost number is only a draft at this point. That budget will be voted on February 8th at 5:00, hopefully.
Mm-hmm.
But it has been, and it's an approximate number. It should be hopefully reasonably close to that. And in school choice, we currently have eight students, which provide $40,000 worth of income, which is subtracted out of the total, but we have not had to access our school choice funds up, up until this point. How did I do, Christine? What did I forget?
I think you hit all the highlights.
Thank you.
Well, and perhaps we should note, we do plan on accessing some of those school choice funds.
Absolutely.
To make up the difference between what has been funded for the water treatment and what we are paying.
Yes.
Tonight, for the water treatment. We had hoped not to do that, or at all, but given where we're at, it's, we, it's, is for the betterment of the students and the staff. And so, that's where we're drawing from for that, at this point.
Did anybody have any questions on the first draft of the budget? I want to thank Pete and Christine for all their efforts in putting this together. I think it's a very good first draft of the budget. I have not really heard much from the town yet in terms of expectations, but we are meeting with the town on the 26th at 6:30, I believe.
I saw that, yeah. Let's see what you guys think, but I think from a prudent planning perspective, we should put the half of that math stuff into the budget. We can always take that out at a meeting with FinCom, but given where the overall budget sits, I'd rather have it in there to, I'd rather have it in there to take out, rather than to not have it in there and have trouble next year, or present the town with a bigger problem next year to come up with 22,000 if the year isn't good enough. And we can certainly call that out.
Okay.
To them as part of our discussion.
Sure.
But I'd rather present sort of really what we, what we need here.
Okay.
For that.
And I will look at the...
Does that make sense to folks?
I'm sorry, excuse me. And I will look at, a little bit more closely at the PD.
Okay.
Because I, I do believe that number is still a little bit lower than it should be.
Yeah, we should put in what we reasonably think absent catastrophic issues. We can't, we can't budget for that.
Still needed to be mentioned.
It's, and it, and it should be mentioned, because folks need to understand that. And, you know, if folks have to go outside of the school to get those same credits that they're getting within, it is going to cost us even more money. So, if this does happen, we are probably going to have to come up with budget dollars to fund it still internally, because it's going to be a lot cheaper than trying to, trying to do that one-off.
Right.
It's never good. Other questions with the budget? And then, do folks generally, for the capital, does that, what I said before, does that make sense? We would book, we would book to do a warrant article for the phone system. Look to hopefully have a little more information regarding roof. I'm going to talk to Carol a little more. I mean...
We won't have that done.
We won't have that done, but if we have some immediate issues, is that something that needs to be dealt with? What are we talking about there? And then, playground is separate, but again, we'll speak to that with FinCom as well. And then, finally, with the key fobs, we'd look to put that onto the capital plan.
Okay.
Okay. Is that it?
That is it.
Oh, you have the...
The other thing I, I did have, and you were sent this, is the six-week schedule, and I believe it was sent before. One of the things we talked about at the admin review meeting, and Mike can probably speak to this, is in Old Rochester, which is formatted the same way that we are here, they have three elementary towns and then a region, so it's the exact same setup we have. The school committee decided to go to a six-week cycle instead of a four-week cycle for their meetings. It certainly was appreciated by administrators, but also by school committee members. I'm sure you thoroughly enjoy coming and listening to us, but you probably also wouldn't be terribly upset if it was a few less meetings a month, a year. And so, this is just a sample of their schedule. Actually, a Denit staff member is the chair of one of the elementary committees there, and she brought it up to me and said that it's been working extremely well, and she was kind enough to send me the schedule, and everybody's been very interested in it. I have not gotten as far as actually looking at a calendar and seeing how it might work, but so far, the committees seem to all be pretty interested in looking at the possibility.
So, I'm going to apologize, because I'm running up against a time issue to go and pick up boys that are going to be stranded in Plymouth.
Yep.
So, that actually might be a nicer evening for me if I leave them there.
Yeah.
I, I would just say, I think, I think this is a great idea. I'm not sure six, my initial looking at calendars and things, I'm not sure six weeks makes sense, but I think we could certainly go through and drop meetings.
Okay.
You know, I mean, they take a break pretty much all summer.
Mm-hmm.
But like, I think about right now, like, you know, how much, like, December, January, February, I don't see how we don't...
Budget season, I don't know how we do it either, yeah.
How we even go six weeks, you know? It's sort of, it's pretty rapid fire. But there are other places where I think we could relax that and be beneficial to everybody. So, I'm total, I'm totally open to it. Do folks feel...
I'm ready to make a motion on it right now. You know, the, the whole point to hiring the entire administrative team isn't so they can come here and give us the reports. I mean, it, it's part of governance and letting the community know what's going on, but we really want them to have their energy for the day-to-day operations of our schools, where they're putting their efforts and their energy into making an e-school special for the kids at our home. And I think to have them coming out several times a month for all the meetings, for the subcommittees, and the general meeting, is a waste of our resources and a waste of their time.
Yep.
Agreed.
So, what motion did you want to make?
I want to make a soft motion to just show some favoritism towards reducing the number of meetings we have every year. I, I hear you are, Liz, a little hesitant about it. I would be comfortable...
I'm not hesitant. I think we just need to be smart about where we do that.
Right. I would be comfortable going down from once a month to every six weeks with some judicious placement of meetings.
And we all...
It has right in Joy's proposal that additional meetings could be added.
Right. I mean, I have the ability to call a meeting anytime I want. You guys might not show up, but I'll call me. But, but the point is, is if we need it, we can always have it, and I think that's, that's definitely...
But if we can allow our administrators kind of plan out there like a little bit more seamlessly than it's currently planned out, I think that would do us all a lot good.
So, I will add that on the agenda after we finish up budgets to look at that.
Sure. Okay, great.
We, we, we designed the 31s.
Yes, it's on the Union 31 agenda.
Yep.
So, we're going to get some more feedback.
Okay. Right. And I have presented it at all the meetings, and it, it has certainly resonated with everyone.
Yep.
That's all I had. Thank you.
Anything else?
Motion to adjourn?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. We adjourned. Thank you very much. Good night.